Mr. President, you have a quorum.
So we've got one, two, three, public, one agenda item.
I'd like to ask, the administration has asked that we remove item number nine at this point from the calendar, that's the minimum wage resolution for further research. It will be brought back in two weeks. With that amendment, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Trustee Riley, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Gonzalez-Gian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Like to ask Trustee Brown for a readout of a closed session.
At tonight's closed session, the Board voted to approve the appointment of the following public employee contracts which are subject to contractual agreement by the Chancellor. Recommendation to appoint Alexis Montevergen as President of Student Services College of Alameda, effective March 26, 2014 through June 30, 2016, at $139,500 annually. Five yeses, zero noes, two absent. Congratulations.
Is Dr. Montevergen here?
Stand up.
Stand up. Great. At this point, we move on to the next section of the agenda, which is communications for members of the public. We would ask that we have members of the public, please limit their comments to three minutes on agenda, on items that are not before the Board this evening. Do we have speakers?
Yes, Mr. President, we have Matthew Goldstein, Romeo Garcia of the Peralta Foundation, and Oscar Sorto.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Goldstein, President of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, AFT Local 1603. First, I'd like to express concern over a growing emphasis by administration on productivity and enrollment over pedagogy, education, and even workplace safety in some cases. As I've said at the Planning and Budget Committee a number of times, by pitting the colleges against each other in an enrollment-driven competition for resources, the budget allocation model we've adopted threatens sometimes to make ever-increasing productivity to colleges be all, end all. Skilled enrollment management can make classes, more classes available to students, and of course, boost the numbers that are crucial for apportionment, but if hitting and exceeding FTEs targets become the college's principal reason for being, they risk losing sight of the most fundamental goals of the colleges. I should add, too, that faculty are more and more distressed by the way in which administrators increasingly embrace the logic and rhetoric of business and spurn core higher education values, such as intellectual development, cultural and aesthetic sensitivity, and moral improvement. Colleges can be smoothly-run workplaces without becoming tailorized factories, and administrators who focus exclusively on money-making metrics do their colleges, their faculties, and their students a grave disservice. Next, I'd like to encourage the Board to take seriously the recent uproar over the district's contract with Partners in Leadership. As you've seen, many on our, many of our college campuses question whether the top-down corporate organizational model pushed by PIL has any place at a democratic public institution such as ours. Also troubling to many is the use of our still-depleted general funds for services delivered so far from the classroom. And of course, many also wonder how a group whose leaders' cultural commitments are so clearly at odds with the district's cultural commitments could bring the kind of change that the Peralta family has called for. After all, Peralta family values include diversity, tolerance, and fairness. Finally, I am pleased to announce that PFT captured top honors in the Newsletter Division of the 2014 CFT Communications Awards, held last weekend as part of the annual convention of the California Federation of Teachers, and copies of the award-winning Peralta teacher are now in campus mailboxes. In another gratifying ceremony, PFT was recognized for its 50 years of affiliation with the American Federation of Teachers, which is to say that PFT and Peralta share a birthday and were sort of fraternal twins then, and the union looks forward to playing a significant role in the events and retrospectives that are sure to mark the district's celebration of its golden anniversary. Thanks a lot.
Good evening, my name is Romeo Garcia, I'm the Executive Director at the Peralta Colleges Foundation. I want to come here this evening to give an update on our scholarship program this semester. Again, very happy to announce that from spring of last year, when we had 65 applications for the scholarships through the foundation, this semester, we have 1,004 applications for scholarships through the foundation. We went to an online system this semester in order to accommodate the increases that we anticipated, or actually, this year, anticipated based on last semester's increases also. So, the reading process for those applications is underway, and I'd like to thank a lot of the Peralta community for being a part of the reading process and invite others, if you're interested. We can, we sent out a notice last week letting members of the community know that we do still, we did still need some readers last year, and this is certainly, I mean, last week, this is certainly one of those opportunities where you hear the stories that our Peralta students have to tell about their path to the community colleges, and what they would like to accomplish in their lives, and how Peralta will help them to do that. So, very glad that we were able to increase our scholarships. Now, the task that I asked for a year ago is now before me, that is, to now raise more money so that we can give out even more scholarships to the students that apply. My other announcement has to do with our annual golf tournament, which is coming up on May 5th, again, at Sequoia Country Club. Bring attention to, in front of you, most of you, there is an envelope that has a postcard in it that announces the event, so you can certainly share that information with others. If you have friends who were with us last year, encourage them to participate. If you have individuals who I should reach out to, to have them join us for our golf tournament, then please let me know. This is one of our two fundraisers of the year, and it's one of the opportunities that we have to bring in funds to help support our students and award the scholarships that they are very deserving of. So, thank you very much in advance for your support and getting in touch with me. Last year's golf tournament was very successful, and I anticipate again, at Sequoia Country Club, it will be successful again. Thank you.
Do we have Mr. Oscar Sorto in the audience? Mr. Oscar Sorto? Mr. Carl Oliver?
Hello, I wanted to speak on item number nine, but I guess it was removed from the agenda, but I just wanted to thank you guys for putting that item on the agenda to raise the minimum wage for students at Peralta. There has been a lot of work being done at all cities in Alameda County to raise the minimum wage, and it hasn't been passed yet, and I would like to thank you as a student to take the initiative to not wait for it to be passed, and to go ahead and, at least, and to increase the minimum wage at Peralta by 50 percent, so, thank you.
That concludes the speakers for this evening.
I'd like to just move back to the approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion's been moved and seconded by consensus. We want to actually add a particular item on the agenda, if we can.
Yeah, there's a point of-
Make a slight modification to the agenda. Trustee Brown?
A point of clarification, item 15 has an additional, additional short-term hourly employee, for notice, Myra Arevalo at Laney, from 3:26:14 through 6:30:14, as an instructional assistant, basic skills.
Great. Now, we'd like to move to the approval of the minutes from the meeting of March 11th. Is there a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Moved by Trustee Glossus, seconded by Trustee Riley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Now, we move on to Associated Student Government Reports, item number two, getting back to the agenda of the day, Associated Student Government Reports. Do we have any reports, or are people off on spring break yet? Guess spring break hasn't started yet.
No, not yet. Good evening, everyone, I am Malaysia Williams, the Associated Students of College of Alameda Student Body President, and I am here to give you a report this evening. For the remainder of the month, I'd like to just give you some events that the Associated Students will be having, as well as some of our clubs on campus. The following events include, two events this Thursday, which will be happening on March 27. Our Gay Straight Alliance Club will be hosting a movie called Frozen, that is from 12 to 2. We will be, also be having a Dream Act event, which some of the Dream Act Scholarship recipients will be giving presentations and their congratulations, as well as their thank-yous for being some of the college recipients. This will be happening on Thursday from 10 to 12. On April 1st, our Latin Club will be hosting a Caesar Chavez event, this is from 12 to 2. The Caesar Chavez event will be about a discussion on workers' rights. The Associated Students of College of Alameda has entered a partnership with the Asian-American Donor Program. It is a program that promotes donating bone marrow for those who are not in need or have trouble finding a recipient. This event will be on April 22nd and the 23rd. The ASCOA and the Gay Straight Alliance will be having a collaboration event on different levels of discrimination that students face. This will be held on April 22nd from 11 to 2. The ASCOA is also planning their annual award ceremony, which will happen on May 9th, and we invite all the Peralta Community College District to attend, especially our Board members here. The ASCOA has been heavily involved with the administration on working with accreditation. Currently, we have students sitting on each subcommittee, and we also have a student lead. We are in the planning processes of reconstructing our Student Center, we hope to bring more student life to the campus, and we hope to get a cafeteria, as well as creating a game room and a cyber café, and also a lounge for some of the students to enjoy on the College of Alameda campus. We hope that this completion will be done by fall of 2014. Also, we decided to create more offices in our Student Center for clubs to have more activity amongst ourselves. The Muslim Student Alliance joined a Spread of the Peace event at the San Francisco State University, where they passed, where they engaged in forums, speaking about peace to engage in our community. The Anthropology Club is working with Dr. Strong to do DNA testing for our campus. The ASCOA is looking to gathering more funding so all of the students can be a part of this process. The, if those of you who may not know, the DNA testing traces back students' lineage for years. We'd like to also give a special thanks to Susan May, who is doing the College of Alameda brochure. She has worked very well with the ASCOA, and working with our schedules and finding out the perfect pictures for our brochure. And this concludes my report, you all have a good evening.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Christian from Merritt College, President of Associated Students. We've held weekly events for our Women's History Month, today was our final event for Women's History, a tribute to mothers and resources for women. It was co-sponsored with Puente Programs. On Thursday, we'll have Martin Luther King III at noon in our ASMC chambers to talk with our leaders at Merritt College. Caesar Chavez event is on April 2nd. Our ICC will be hosting a Student Appreciation Day on April 8th, along with elections. Our elections will be held April 8th and on April 9th. Our end-of-the-year program will be hosted by ASMC, that will be May 14th, we invite you all, it's from 5:00 to 8:30, and we will announce our winners of our scholarships that night. The Criminal Justice Program is launching a new brochure, and that will be coming out, Susan May is ahead of that, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Danny McCarty, I'm currently a full-time student at Berkeley City College and a member of the Judicial Council. Since giving my last report, BCC has hosted some really incredible events that have sparked an even greater and still-growing sense of community among our students, faculty, and administration. Our St. Patrick's Day event turned out to be a hit. We had the atrium filled with tables for the tournament, and students were anxiously filing into the atrium to check out the activities that were taking place. We were happy to provide our students with free pizza in return for a brief survey response, which was aimed towards better understanding the students' opinion regarding our BCC newsletter and the operations of our student government in general. And this leads me into my next point. It delights me to share with everyone listening and watching this evening on the great success of our ASBCC Town Hall event. This event took place in the atrium last Wednesday, and structurally, I don't think we could have organized it better. We briefly introduced the council to those who were present, and then we jumped into small, interactive group discussions, with each facilitated by a student government member. Our focus points included communication, engagement, and general feedback from the students' individual stories regarding their experience in meeting their educational goals at BCC. The sentiment that our students shared can often be more honest and helpful to allow us to better understand how we can actually represent them. After each topic was covered in smaller group discussion, we would zoom out for about five to seven minutes to share the thoughts and opinions that were brought up from each group, taking note of the overlap that exists, that exists from the students' perspective. Additionally, our council gathered in solidarity, in solidarity at our ASBCC retreat this last Saturday. The retreat provided a great deal of information on time management, leadership qualities, and work ethic. Unfortunately, I had to excuse myself early due to work purposes, but the general response that I gathered from my colleagues concluded that the event really strengthened not only our sense of duty and purpose, but it also enhanced the solidarity among the individuals that comprise the Associated Students of Berkeley City College. Currently, the council has been diligently, diligently working on different focus areas for improving the vivacity of our school. To mention just a few, we are in the initial stages, a few members, including myself, to be proposing a plant initiative that will be proposed to the Facilities Committee to increase the liveliness and the aesthetics appeal on our school. We've began doing preliminary research on low-maintenance plants, as well as looking into NASA's top-10 suggested indoor air filtering plants. A petition has been circulating around campus to bring more attention to our school's minimal Wi-Fi access. This is one of the most commonly-held concerns that many students have, but, excuse me, a dedicated senator has brought the matter into her own hands by gathering a collection of signatures, and ultimately, we want to bring greater light to the issue and take measures to fixing it. The student, staff, and administrators, as well as the faculty, are now well aware of this issue, and we are moving forward to proposing solutions in the next few days. We are quickly approaching the final stages of the elections campaigning period. The debates for upcoming candidates will be taking place on April 1st and April 2nd. The Elections Committee has organized the event into three sections, which include general topics, position-specific topics, and then a Q&amp;A session to engage the audience with their prospective student representatives. Each section will be moderated by the Elections Committee Chair, and brief rebuttals will be permitted where allowed. The purpose of the candidate debates are to help candidates become more familiar with the ruling documents, publicize themselves to the student body, and to give the student body an opportunity to become more familiar with the candidates' ideologies and platforms. That concludes my report.
Okay, good evening, Board and members of the public. My name's Edward Chavez, and I'm Secretary of the Associated Students of Laney College. I'm really excited to announce that tomorrow, we'll be holding our fifth Town Hall Discussion of the semester, and tomorrow, we will be joined by Board of Trustees President Abel Guillen, and as well as Oakland Mayor Jean Kwan, Laney Student and Representative of the Brown Alliance of Students Taking Action, Crystal Perez, as well as former Peralta District Student Trustee Marlene Hurd. Now, the topic of this discussion is student power, then and now. So, the idea is to have panelists discuss their time as student activists, you know, back in the day, not, not too far back, and then have students who are currently active in campus organizing, and so, we're going to have, you know, questions and answers, and then, at the end of the, at the end of the discussion, go into open forum, where students could talk to their representatives about how we, as a, as a campus and as a district, could do more to get more students involved and to be really well-organized, so that we could start getting students involved in politics, and, yeah, just make our voices heard. This is a follow-up to our last Town Hall Discussion two weeks ago, which was on resisting corporate power in education. Students were really excited to take part in this event and meet, and, yeah, and meet people from the No Corporate Money Campaign, and students from City College of San Francisco. Last Friday, the Fusion Theater Group at Laney College, they held their open rehearsal space, so this was a chance for people from the campus to come in, see what they're working on, they have a lot of cool projects going on, so, yeah, come out to the Odell Johnson Theater and support the Fusion Theater Group, they're a really talented group of people, students at Laney, and they're, yeah, they're, they're just doing a really great job. Yeah, we're also doing our Caesar Chavez event on Monday, March 31st, so, the Brown Alliance of Students Taking Action, they're, they're going to be hosting their Workers' Rights Panel, and, yeah, so, organizers from the Domestic Workers Bill of Rights are going to be coming out and speaking about what they're working on, as well as people from Latino Network, and, yeah, should be a great event, and Crystal Perez, who's been part of that group and organizing with them, she's going to be honored by City Hall of Oakland on April 1st. So, yeah, Chris, yeah, go Crystal, and she's been doing a great job. So, yeah, we're, we're ready for our Women's Appreciation Event on, which is going to be held on April, April 3rd at 5:30. So, everyone's invited to come out to Laney College Student Center, you know, of course, of course, we're free for all women and men, men, if you come, just, you know, help us out with some serving and cleaning up and stuff. So, should be, it's turning out to be a great event, we're going to be honoring 50 women leaders from the Peralta District, including our very own Dr. Webb Tomoko, as well as the countless administrators, staff, teachers, and students that, you know, really make, that really make our school awesome. So, we're, we finalize the criteria for our ASLC scholarships that we give out at the end of every spring semester. So, this year, we're giving out $10,000, and we're, yeah, so now, it's just time to spread the word, make sure that all our students know about it, and that's, that's what we're going to be doing for the rest of the semester. And, so tomorrow, Wednesday, the Laney Service Community, which is a student-run organization founded by students at Berkeley City College, UC Berkeley, and Laney College, we're going to be hosting a resume workshop, and I do, I would like to thank Dr. Webb for supporting this student-run program. It's, it's doing a lot to expose students at Laney to the UC Berkeley campus, as well as build, building relationships with students and programs at UC Berkeley, so I think it's a really good thing for our school. And, yeah, on the, from the 26th to the 29th, like, yeah, like Mr. Guillen mentioned at the last board meeting, the Placas play is going to be showing, so, you know, ASLC will be out there, come, you know, come say hi, we're going to be tabling, and then we could all go and watch the play together at 8 o'clock. And lastly, on, on April 2nd, the ASLC, we're going to be holding an emergency Town Hall Discussion. This is, you know, this is different than our regularly-scheduled Town Halls that we've been doing, and this one, it's, it's in response to some controversy surrounding Janet Napolitano being the keynote speaker at our Laney graduation, and so, as student representatives, we, we have to listen to a lot of the concern that students have expressed to us, and in order to address that concern, we're, we're going to be holding this Town Hall Meeting, so, yeah, students, teachers, members of the public are welcome to join us at 12 o'clock at the forum, you know, just make their voices heard, we're basically just going to be listening, and we haven't made any official statements or taken any official stance, we're going to see how everyone feels about it and move forward from there, so, but, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of important dialogue going on around this issue, and we're going to, we're going to keep an open mind and just keep listening to students about how they want to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez, I, I remember to bring my cane tomorrow to the meeting.
Back in the day, yeah. Good evening, I'm Mark Wilson, I'm the Communication Officer for the Peralta Student Council, and I have a report on student power today. Two weeks ago, the Laney Student Government passed the Student Equity and Shared Governance Resolution, requesting that we expand the number of students on shared governance committees, and they brought it to the Peralta Student Council, and the Peralta Student Council, which is made up of all four student governments and other representatives from the colleges, endorsed that resolution. Last Friday, I was at the District Education Committee when they formed the new CTE Committee, Career Technical Education Committee, and that presented the opportunity to request four students, one from each college, to be on that new subcommittee, and that resolution was passed by the Education Committee. So, we hope that that becomes the first of many expansions of students across district shared governance committees. That opened up a conversation about leadership development for students, now that students would be having expanded opportunities at shared governance. I would like to remind everybody here, I believe you've all got a copy of the Peralta Student Council's 21st Century Student Leadership Development and Campus Life, that was a document we created last year, asking for the new directors, but along with the new directors, we also asked that classes be instituted, hopefully leading to, eventually, to a certificate in student leadership. We recently were able to lobby to get the one class that has been taught that we referred to in our document, PolySci 32 at College of Alameda, was recently put back in the schedule, and that is the model, and the first of a four-class series, which has gone through the Curriculum Committee and is ready to go, so we would encourage all the administrators to take a look at that, whether they want to put all four classes at Alameda or one class at each college. This is a start of what we would hope to be a pathway for student leaders to take through Peralta as they go on either to their career or to the university. Also, I just want to keep mentioning Earth Week, it keeps building. I can't list every, every event anymore, so I just want to hit some highlights. It all starts around the Ecology Festival on April 24th, that's at Laney, between the bistro and the estuary. We're continuing to grow that, more and more people are joining in, and now, the colleges are starting to notify us that they'll be bringing classes and different programs to the festival, so, we're reaching out to the community, and we're reaching across the district to the different colleges. That starts at 11 a.m., and it goes till 2 p.m., 2 p.m. The Culinary Arts Program at Laney will be holding their regular cooking contest, so everybody can come out and sample their, the products of that. We have brought some great speakers. On Earth Day, the actual Earth Day, April 22nd, Tuesday, we have Stanford Professor Dr. Clyde Wilson, will be speaking about sustainable nutrition for students. He's a biochemist that does research around nutrition and athletics, and so, he, he teaches both the athletes at Stanford and the doctors at USF about nutrition and sports nutrition. So, he'll be speaking about nutrition about 12:15 on Tuesday. On Wednesday morning, we'll have Dr. Richard Bailey from the Lake Merritt Institute, he'll be speaking about the, the history of the, the development of Lake Merritt, or the redevelopment of Lake Merritt, which continues today with the Estuary Restoration Project. And then, that Wednesday, April 23rd, at noon, a little afternoon, we will have Constance Taylor from Wild Oakland, who'll be doing a report back on the BioBlitz around Lake Merritt, where they count, tried to count every species, including using underwater cameras to see what's out in the water. So, those are the, the student-led and campus events, and then Friday is when the City of Oakland is bringing their Resilient and Sustainable Cities Symposium to Laney College, which is an international symposium on what they used to call disaster planning, and what they now call resilient cities. And they're doing an eco tour on Saturday. So, anyway, that's just a sampling of Earth Week, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask that, without any objection from the Board, that we move item number 19, as considered approval amendment. item number 19, as Consider Approval Amendment Number Four to Agreement for Project Labor Agreement Management Services with Davil Sloan, Inc., DSI, that we move that to the action calendar for discussion. With that objection, seeing none, so ordered, we're going to move item number 19 to the action calendar. We're going to move back to the regular agenda at this point. Next item is Chancellor's Report. Chancellor Ortiz.
Thank you very much, President Guiyan. Good evening, everyone. Let me start by celebrating the Student Equity Summit that took place on March 14th. The Peralta District was the host of that statewide summit. We had representation, not only across the state, but every college at the Peralta District, so I thank the presidents for being there. The discussion about student equity has resurfaced. It was suspended due to budget cuts, but now that our budgets are healthy again, if I may say that, the State Chancellor's Office would like to revive our student equity plans. Of course, that is very important for us here at the Peralta District, and we are looking at closing the achievement gap for underrepresented populations, who are the majority of our students, and the Peralta colleges are moving forward to comply with a student equity plan, and I'm looking forward to presenting those equity plans to the board as soon as we have them in place. On the heels of that summit, I was able to connect with Assembly, Assembly Member Rob Banta, who's our Assembly Member, and he graced me with his presence last week, visited me to discuss his proposed legislation, AB 1942, Proposed Legislation on Accreditation Reform. Those of you who know this, this bill, Assembly Member Banta is proposing that the accreditation process be a more open, competitive process with regards to the Accreditation Commission, and that colleges have a choice to, to take their accreditation standards throughout the country. I expressed to Assembly Member Banta that this may be problematic, and that he assured me that this bill is actually evolving, and he is interested in our input as to see the final product that will probably at least a month or two away. So, it was a very productive meeting, and Assembly Member Banta has assured me that when it comes to higher education issues, particularly with community colleges, that he will be consulting with the Peralta District. So, that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Chancellor. Move on now to Board of Trustees' Report. I'd like to start with Student Trustee Clegg. No report? Thank you. Student Trustee Wiley.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's very great to see everyone again today, and on the St. Patrick's Day, I went to some many different events. I met so many students, they're from the Peralta Community College, they're from the San Francisco City College, they're also from the Deansa College. It's very great to talk about what can we do for the future, and talk about the different program from their college, the event or activity, to, so I can receive some feedback and also some suggestion, what can I do for the next year to talk to some students, too. And also, on the March 20th, it's very great to have the picture with Dr. Webb and the student from Laney College. That remind me is, I'm so proud, I'm a student from Laney College, and it's the one part of community, the Peralta Community College, that always helped me to remind, I should be very proud of the student from the Oakland, too. Because when people, they talk about Oakland, they, some of them, they talk about some negative feedback, but I think we should have the responsibility to talk about some positive feedback for the city of Oakland. So, thank you for everyone to help me to become better. And for the, it's coming for this Friday, I'm going to attend the Asian Community Lunch with the Port of Oakland, and I'm very welcome to, if anyone to want to join the lunch on this Friday at 12 o'clock, please welcome to contact me or contact the APAS program at Laney College, the MyLaw. And also, for the April 5th, I'm going to attend the Diablo Village JACL, it's Japanese program, the event, so please welcome to talk to me or talk to the Tomoko, who's the Laney College Student Activity Director. That's my report today, thank you.
Thank you, Student Trustee. Trustee Withrow. Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Thank you. I'm happy to report that I am almost on sabbatical. I'll be on sabbatical starting next week after I finish grading my finals. Well, no, it didn't quite work out the way I planned last time, but, no, I get a, I get a whole year of sabbatical every seven years, and I divided my year over three years, so I take a quarter off every year, because I love teaching so much, I couldn't give up a whole year of teaching all at once. Now, actually, that is, that is actually the case. I, I wouldn't want to leave the classroom for a whole year at a time, that'd be too hard on me. But, you know, I'm in the final weeks of, of my quarter down at Deansa, and the amazing thing that I note is how smart community college students are. I think in the last, in the last two weeks, I probably graded 300 papers or something like that. It's, you know, it's very intensive work, teaching, but it's really rewarding in that way, because you, you see just these amazing minds at work. And then, this past weekend, raised the wage East Bay, mobilized out of Berkeley City College, students organized, 80 students came out onto the streets of Berkeley to advocate for an increased minimum wage in the city of Berkeley. Not only do students think in these brilliant ways, but then they act really powerfully. And that combination is, is what we're about as, as Community College District. I'm just very proud of what we do very consistently with, with students. And with that, I'll just move on. Thank you.
Trustee Galasa.
I don't have an official report, but I did want to thank my colleague for being a, one of the great architects of the push to increase the minimum wage, and I read the details not so recently about the impact that it has had on the San Jose economy. That alone, with 40,000 part-timers there working for minimum wage, the $2 increase, increased by over $100 million, the money into the economy. It's an extraordinary experience, and at the same time, there were no significant loss of jobs, all those other kind of things, they said, well, what happened? And, and that general unemployment is way down, one of the lower areas of the Bay. So, just thanks, Nikki, for your work and for your conscience in this very important social endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can point out, in fact, there was actually an increase in jobs. There were thousands of jobs added to the San Jose economy, in addition to the $160 million that was pumped into the, pumped into the local economy, and an increase in business growth, especially in the retail sector, which is where, you know, the opponents had said you would see the most job loss. It was actually just the opposite of what they were saying was going to happen. Thank you very much for the praise, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Trustee Handy. Okay, Trustee Brown.
It was another Thelma and Louise weekend with Trustee Handy. We started out early in the morning with the, at Castlemont High School, at the Oakland Unified School District's Parent and Community Fair, and one of our colleagues from State Center Community College in Fresno, Eric Payne, which, who is the youngest elected official in Fresno County, and who, in California, and who was raised by a single mother with three boys, and had a very humble beginning to go on to have an advanced degree in, in science, a master's degree, and be the youngest elected official, spoke to our East Oakland community about the importance of education and resilience, resiliency, and tenacity, and commitment and hope, and that was a great, inspiring speech. And then we had a, an opportunity, well, okay, so I brought the van that flies, and, and I took Trustee Handy, Trustee Payne, Jamokee Hinton-Hodge, who's on the Oakland School Board, I got them all in the van, and we went to Mills College after that, which Trustee Handy will tell you about. And then we went on our East Oakland Redevelopment Tour to the new Foothills Mall that, Foothill Square, well, Foothill Square Mall, where there's a new grocery store, there's a new shopping center, where there had not been retail outlets before, so that's a, it's a very important economic development for the East Oakland community. And it was, the weekend continued with the National Women's Political Caucus, Susan B. Anthony fundraiser on Sunday, that was celebrating Nancy Skinner and the two, two litigants in California's Prop 8 case, were the honorees there, and I was pleased to be able to attend and also attend as a sponsor of the event. So, I'll let Trustee Handy tell you more about the event, and she's only, of course, going to bring up the things that are suitable for, for public discussion.
Yes, you all haven't lived until you've had a ride with Trustee Brown in the mommy van. It moves very quickly. As I said, by the time we, we were at one event, and we also, Mayor Kwan was there, and she was also having her, what was it? Town hall, town hall meeting at Castlemont at the same time that we were there for the other event, and running into other elected officials, Larry Reed asked us to really check out what had happened in that area of East Oakland, and it was amazing to go and see there. I mean, people in, in the community, I mean, we don't have major box retails in Oakland, Ross is the first. We missed, Oakland kind of missed out on that opportunity, and it was passed on to Emeryville. So, the Ross was amazing, he told us how they had taken their employees off-site to a hotel for a week to get training, and you knew it, you felt it when you went in, they were asking you how you were doing, saying hello. The store was immaculate, and it was really a community thing, and now the big food Macs will be opening soon, so it's really revitalizing that, that, the community. So, then we all hopped in the van, and, and we went over to Mills College, and that was interesting, trying to find out where we're supposed to be. GPS can get you there, but it won't help you find the building. So, they were expecting one elected official to come in and talk to this class for Ignite, people who want to learn about becoming involved in politics, and in come the four of us. But it was an amazing opportunity to see the women that were studying, they were actually giving the reports on their fundraising efforts, and mall fundraising efforts, but it was so interesting, we were asking if we could actually kind of get that information from them. Talking about our different experiences, and everyone is different, from, from the youngest African-American male to having a professional degree in, in parenting and, and moving into a political position. I think I was the most senior elected official, and then Jamokee Hodge talked about going through a campaign while you're also having other life challenges. So, the students were very, very motivated to, to speak to us, and even afterwards, came out and spoke with us, and we all went out and took pictures, but it was one interesting thing that one young lady said to me, she said, you know, I didn't think that you could be sassy and smart-mouthed and be an elected official. And, and it was interesting for us to hear, because you see us in a position where we're, we are acting under the confines of decorum and Brown Act and all of those, but our true personalities don't necessarily come through, so having an opportunity to interact with the students, and they asked very, very good questions about what if you have a mental illness, or a diagnosis, and you want to run for office, very thought-filled questions, what it's like to actually have a campaign, how to raise money. So, it was an incredible opportunity to engage with one of our sister colleges. Hmm? Oh, and then we went to Las Pericos Market, because she heard that they had the best of each A in town, and they did, and we ate, and we bought products, and we bought tamarindo, which I'm still trying to figure out how to make that myself, but the powder mix worked really, really well. So, it was definitely a cultural tour for this young man from Fresno, he got to see more of Oakland than he ever thought he was going to have, but I encourage you all to take an opportunity to visit all of these new establishments and the building, that building that's happening, and if you get an opportunity to visit Castlemont's campus and youth uprising. We've done a lot of incredible things in Oakland, and it was a day that we could feel really, really proud to show our, our visiting tourist trustee, but also feel a lot of pride ourselves in what Oakland's been able to accomplish. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, trustees. I wanted to just briefly acknowledge how hard our college presidents work. I know they're out there in the community, doing a lot of things to try to make their, their student life successful, but in particular, I wanted to acknowledge Dr. Maria Ambres Calaviz, who was recently honored by Assembly Member Bill Cork as his Woman of the Year for Assembly District 20, as her education honoree. So, for the state of California, for Assembly District 20, so congratulations, Dr. Maria Ambres Calaviz, and I'm sure that's just one of many successes, many more to come. Congratulations, and we're very proud to have you associated with our college and represent as well. Lastly, I wanted to just put in another plug for the Placas Play that's taking place at Laney College. It's starting Wednesday night, tomorrow night is opening night, it runs through Saturday. Now, the great thing about this play is that there's also going to be a resource fair attached to it at Laney College, thanks to the efforts of Dr. Webb and the committee that's been helping to put that on. I think it's going to be a very successful event. On display will be different community groups that are going to be represented at the Student Center at Laney for all three, three nights, I believe, of the performance, so that's really exciting, I'm looking forward to that. I also want to point out that, and I hope that the district would make an effort, one of the things that I've obviously been concerned about, my background is in public financing, and I do, do a lot of work for school districts up in the state, and one thing that is important to this district is that we know that the district is eligible for funding from the state for facilities, particularly a library at Laney College. There's been a bill that's been introduced by Assembly Member Joe Buchanan in Sacramento that would float essentially a $10.8 billion bond for facility improvements. A good chunk of that goes to state matching funds for districts who have pastor bonds, and we have a colleague here from Contra Costa Community College, they're going to be going out for a bond, and I'm sure it's in their interest, and it's all the community college interest, to make sure that's successful, so that we can tap into those funds to get those projects funded. So, I'm hopeful that this district can formally support that measure and ask our lobbyists to, to turn their attention to, to that bill, to benefit our, our students here in the district. And that concludes my report. I'd like to now turn it over to District Economic Senate Report, Dr. Van Putten.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, trustees, chancellor, district administration, center staff, college presidents, colleagues, and members of the public. Jobs, the economy, and equity seems to be the theme for tonight. A cover article in the Spring 2014 issue of AFT On Campus highlights jobs and the mission of higher education, fueling economic growth. A well-educated workforce is key to state prosperity. This same message was reinforced and brought closer to home at the recent Equity 2014 Conference in downtown Oakland that the chancellor just mentioned, presented by the Commission on the Future of the California Community College League. The Equity 2014 Conference was an extensive survey of the relationships integrating California and national economic success, student equity, and student success. One slide from the opening session noted that, quote, "Community college trustees are being challenged to complete curriculum with a core of student success," end quote, "in the face of persistent and pervasive achievement gaps." Only one out of four students is college-ready. Of those not college-ready, the six-year success rate is 41.1%. For college-ready students, the achievement gap for Black and Latino students is approximately 5%. For those who are not college-ready, the achievement gap for Black and Latino students is approximately 10%. It's safe to say that Black and Latino students account for a larger percentage of non-college-ready students. account for a larger percentage of non-college-ready students than any other ethnic group. That is the gap that we must eliminate for the sake of the whole, not just for the sake of those who present themselves in our classrooms. Policy Links Ruben Lizardo's presentation stated a theme that was reiterated by the luncheon keynote speaker, USC professor Manuel Pastor, namely "All-in Nation and America That Works for All With California Leading the Way." Quote, "To be competitive and sustainable, the next California economy must be built on racial and economic inclusion and intergenerational interdependence," end quote. Ask students why they come to college, and most of them will likely tell you that it's to get the credentials that will facilitate getting good jobs and improving their socioeconomic status. The diversity of our student population is perhaps Peralta's greatest strength. Faculty Association of California Community Colleges President Dean Murakami wrote in a recent issue of Facts, Winter 2014, quote, "While the California community college system champions and celebrates diversity amongst its students, it is unfortunate when this diversity is not reflected in its faculty. As a result, the system falls short of meeting the needs of our students as effectively as it should," end quote. At our last District Academic Senate meeting, Peralta interim Director of Development, Dr. Karen Engel, presented us with a vision of career pathways interconnecting the regional K-12 schools, community colleges, workforce investment boards, four-year universities and the employer community. If Peralta gets the grant to support building this regionally coordinated system, we will make it easier and more meaningful for high school students to move through their curricula in a way that aligns with our community college curricula and that will better prepare them for the academic and career success we all so urgently need for them to experience. In addition to needing a faculty that is appropriately and equitably representing the students and the communities we serve, we desperately need a faculty that is technology-ready with the tools and skills that are required to fully engage students in the learning process. Those tools and skills are what the workplace demands facility with using creatively and collaboratively if the workforce is to support statewide economic progress. At present, as an institution, we are far from technology-ready and we must make a comprehensive district-wide instructional technology initiative that focuses on bringing us into the 21st century an urgent priority. As usual, there's far more to say about this issue and our preparedness for providing students with the structure and support that will facilitate their success. We will revisit this theme in future District Academic Senate reports. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you for receiving it. We welcome your interest and commitment to this much-needed institutional change.
Thank you for that report. And I am also just want to relay our appreciativeness of the board for actually sending us a report by email. I think it's helpful to reflect upon. At this point in time, we'd like to ask, the next item is item number six, presentations. College of Alameda Program of Distinction Presentation. I'd like to ask President Gravenberg to present this item.
Thank you, Board President, again. Chancellor Ortiz, Chancellors Office staff, fellow president, board members, members of the public, colleagues and friends of Peralta. It's always fascinating to really distinguish some of our programs. We have many exemplary programs. I asked Vice President for Instruction, Dr. Stark, at the beginning of the year, to identify the top six programs for the rest of this year in terms of the anticipated board presentations. Automatically, she came to the ADAM program as one of the first ones that we should highlight. So without further ado, and because I want to make sure that they have sufficient time, I'd like to bring up Dean Shar Perlis, the dean for Workforce Development and Applied Science. Dr. Perlis?
Hi, thank you for having us here today. We are, sorry, we are very excited to be here. And I'm going to go ahead and introduce OJ Roundtree. He is the department chair, Derek Piazza, and they have a couple of students with them from our world-renowned apparel design and merchandising program at College of Alameda.
Thank you, Dr. Gravenberg and Dr. Perlis. Chancellor Ortiz, Peralta Board of Trustees, Peralta administrators, Peralta family and guests, thank you for this wonderful opportunity to share the apparel design merchandising program with you this evening. The fashion industry has two major sectors. Number one, apparel wholesale and production, which is the focus of the ADAM program. Number two, retail merchandising and sales. According to Fortune 500, the fashion industry ranks as one of the most viable and employable industries. This is due to the many related areas of employment available within the industry itself. Let's face it, we must wear clothes, as is the case for most of the world, unless perhaps you are part of San Francisco. San Francisco Oakland Bay Area is the third largest apparel manufacturer retail center in the nation, with New York as the largest and our sister city of Los Angeles second, which is a leader in sportswear and knitwear. In 1970, the Fashion Arts Program moved from the Laney campus to its new sister campus, the College of Alameda. In 1983, the program was completely reorganized and continued to evolve, reflecting current industry standards for gainful employment. The major changes have been in course offerings, overstaffing, scheduling conflicts, reductions in certificates, and current renaming, and the current renaming of the program Apparel Design and Merchandising, AKA the ADAM program. Our mission, the Apparel Design and Merchandising Program teaches current fashion industry skills designed to meet vocational training requirements for entry-level employment and career advancements within the area of apparel design and production. ADAM students earn Certificate of Achievements upon successful completion of all required 48 program units. Additionally, an AA degree can be obtained by completing approximately 30 units of academic requirements. This usually takes an additional year to complete. ADAM first-year courses offer a comprehensive educational overview and training in all areas of design and production for the fashion industry. ADAM's second-year instruction incorporates all knowledge and skills learned in the first-year courses and introduces the students to computer technology and related, that is related to the fashion industry. Here you can get an idea of the comprehensive areas of study related to the ADAM program. ADAM has an advantage over other fashion schools by being able to offer computer and software technology. The students also develop finished portfolios using Adobe Illustrator and Photoshop software. Another big advantage for the ADAM program is that it is very affordable and can offer a quality education. Our students can earn the Certificate of Achievement in two years as a full-time student for around $6,500. Compare this to the two private fashion design schools in San Francisco, which cost $100,000 plus per year. ADAM faculty are trained, experienced professionals in the area of fashion design and have taught worldwide. The current ADAM faculty and staff work like a well-tuned engine. Because of this cohesiveness, we are able to be flexible with our program when needed and our students relate to us and their educational environment extremely well. The current ADAM program review reflects a request for an additional 1.0 contract faculty position and a 0.5 staff position. However, ADAM does not intend to implement this request for another two to five years, at which time the program will be revised. A full-time position will be up for retirement, which is myself, and hopefully ADAM will be settled in the new C&amp;D building at the College of Alameda. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to my colleague, Derek Piazza.
Good evening. Fresh energy, new relationships, community awareness, exciting projects and opportunities. These are the gifts that 2013 and 2014 have brought to the Apparel Design and Merchandising Program at the College of Alameda. In the past year, Mr. Roundtree and I have added industry partners to our already expansive and diverse Advisory Board Committee. These members wanted to give a helping hand to our program and more specifically, our students. These relationships launched additional internship and career opportunities for our second-year fashion design students that strengthened their growing classroom skills. New members include ADAM graduate Claire Schaefer, Palm Springs, ADAM graduate Trish Lee of Trish Lee Bridal, San Francisco, ADAM graduate Veronica Smith of Design Veronique, Richmond, ADAM graduate Tracy Ikagami of Erica Tanoff, Berkeley, Stephanie Varier of Varier &amp; Sacco, Oakland, Colleen Crivello of Nomadic Traders, Berkeley, Brenda Mikel of Narciso Rodriguez, New York, and Najib Betanian of Ralph Rucci, New York. Having the opportunity of internships allows students to experience the classroom come to life. This in turn gives ADAM graduates the cutting-edge skills needed to compete and win in the competitive world of fashion. Some of our successful former graduates and their self-startup fashion companies include Skyler Blanchard of Skyler Blanchard Designs in Oakland, Veronica Smith of Design Veronique in Richmond, Kim Sorani of High End Uniforms in Richmond, excuse me, in Benicio, and Stella Karakazi of Two Star Dog in Berkeley. Mr. Roundtree and I also partnered with four programs at Laney College, cosmetology, photography, videography and graphic design. Together, we created tremendous, real-world opportunities for our second-year fashion design students. Our students were able to watch their clearly defined and colorful vision awaken with the help of makeup artists, hairstylists, photographers and videographers. This new relationship with Laney allowed our students to take their work to the next level. After researching, designing and then sewing their collection, they made design decisions that complemented their original vision. This included backdrops, camera angles, lighting, model poses, hair, nails, lashes, lids, lips, brows and cheeks. And do not forget the accessories. On the morning of the shoot, all four departments worked in sync to capture photographs worthy of a layout in New York Magazine. You can see why we say that 2013 and 2014 continues to be a year of fashionable successes and of chic community outreach. The ADAM program forged new, important and lasting industry relationships that generated immediate opportunities that we were able to pass directly to our students. In the coming years, we will build even more bridges within the community so that ADAM students can continue to have a bright and fashionable future.
As we conclude our presentation, the slides will advance automatically on the screen, highlighting ADAM students and the work they do in the classroom. Additionally, ADAM would like to showcase a few student designs. Thank you. Before we do that, I would like to introduce also our teaching assistants who have been with us for a few years and they are also graduates of the program, Mary Petroni and Chris Parata. And with that, I would like to start our little fashion show. So first, we have designer and model Asha Ransom. Asha will be graduating our program this year. Next, we have a sample bustier dress from the apparel draping class, which is a pattern class. This was a collaboration between myself and my teaching assistant, Mary Petroni. This is modeled by one of our students, Jessica Mar. Next is a bustier ball gown, designer by former student Lucy Akana, and this is modeled And last is a jumpsuit, designer Tuan Wong, modeled by Aleah Bryant. Thank you again for this wonderful opportunity to share the ADAM program with you this evening. That concludes our presentation.
Board President, again, it's a pleasure to go to work every day when you have great students and faculty like that. And so we want to thank the board and the Chancellors Office for this opportunity to present some of our best and brightest. Thank you.
That's great. I wonder if they give any fashion consulting advice for free for some of us that are challenged at that department. Trustee Handy, I think, am I mistaken, you're a graduate of the ADAM program if I remember correctly?
Yes, I am. And I don't want any of you doing the math either. But Ms. Scarpa and Ms. Gentini, who are legends in the fashion, we all studied under them. I always thought that I was going to be a fashion designer, but you know, the joke, God's biggest joke is us making plans. But I'm glad to be able to be here to make sure that we have this type of education for students. I also have to say that they listed Stella as two-star job, but Stella Karakas, who graduated from this program, has now changed it to the Stella Boutique, which is on Sixth Street and off of Gilman. And the reason I say her styles are so fantastic, unfortunately, I've been there three times in the past week and I've given her a lot of money. But I believe that I am just supporting our Peralta graduates. So our program truly, truly has put out some great people and I am so excited to hear about the partnerships. I know with Derek Piazza, he's incredible. OJ is wonderful as well. Derek had the opportunity to work with FIDM, but he chose to work for Peralta. So we are very, very fortunate to have the caliber instructors that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by the trustees? Trustee Galasa?
Yes, I thought the presentation was very, very professional. I congratulate everyone involved and the costumes were quite beautiful. My daughter graduated from that program some time ago, went on to work in the fashion industry, taught at FIDM for a while, both here in San Francisco and then branches in Los Angeles. She has her own business with her sister right now. They've been in business for a long time in the fashion-related industry. And as I left for work here tonight, I stopped, my daughter is visiting, and I stopped and I said, "Check out my outfit." She says, "Perfect." So, and she said for a small charge, she'd help out these other guys. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gravenberg, and kudos to your entire ADAM team there at College of Alameda. Thank you very much. Trustee Wiley?
Thank you for those students. I'm so proud of them. And that's also talk about some, I remember some parent, they're very traditional, just, they are just thinking one, their daughter or son, they want to be a medical doctor or to be a medical doctor or maybe accounting. That reminds us, we do need some student, they work in the diversity job, for example, the fashion designer, or maybe we have medical doctor, we need nurse. So if only have medical doctor who going to take care of the patient. And also, when we go to some event or conference, and also even for the daily wear, we need the fashion designer to help us to make us to be higher level. And thank you so much, and that's very great to remind the student to keep going to do what you like and what you enjoy to do. You can be a fashion designer, you can be maybe create a restaurant, you can be the chief for some high-end levels and many different diversity job and diversity about the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Trustee Wiley. Seeing the other comments, we're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the consent calendar. These are routine items that are non-controversial. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Second.
It's moved by trustee Withrow, seconded by trustee Galasa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved. We move on to the action calendar at this time. Action calendar is item number 19. Item number 19 is consider approval of amendment number four to the Agreement for Project Labor Agreement Management Services with Dobby or Sloan, Inc., DSI. And that was pulled for discussion by trustee Handy. Trustee Handy? Well, first of all, let's entertain a motion for approval. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Item number 19. Moved by trustee Withrow, seconded by trustee Riley. Discussion, trustee Handy?
Some time ago, I guess it was an ACCT, ACCT conference in Seattle last year, where we had an opportunity to hear about how project labor agreements in colleges were working to make incredible programs. And one specific program was in the city of Los Angeles, where they were taking formerly incarcerated and also gang members and people from challenged communities. And they were entering into apprenticeships, training programs, and when they left those programs, they were actually coming to work in the constructions and the capital projects of the colleges that they attended. We don't have those types of things here, and one of the things I want to express to you is that when we did our first project labor agreement, our heart was there, but it was rushed. And we have talked with Building Trades, the communities, and our trustees, and we recognize that it's time for us to reexamine our project labor agreement and make sure that it has the meat and teeth in it so that we can start doing these types of things. I mean, imagine a student studying here, interning with a company, we're building all of these massive buildings, construction, we will always be doing construction. But then imagine that student working on that project on that campus. Those are the types of things that this community really needs. So I just wanted to say that I support this, and I know that our community, our Building Trades and our colleges are all ready for us to look at how we can make stronger partnerships. Thank you.
Any other comments from trustees? I just wanted to point out that the period of expiration for the PLA is coming up, and that'd be an opportunity for the district to renegotiate that and figure out what those best practices look like. I think there's a lot more information out there as to what works, as trustee Handy mentioned, so we look forward to that in the coming months. Without any other discussion, I'd like to call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. So that takes care of the action calendar, but now we have a fun item, if you will. I'd like to ask the, my colleagues to join me in wishing the senior trustee of the Peralta Board of Trustees, I think he's more senior today because it's his birthday. Trustee Riley, happy birthday. Like to ask that he'll join me in wishing him the traditional version of happy birthday, or we can do the Stevie Wonder version.
Stevie Wonder.
I thought this meeting was going to be over earlier. I was trying to sneak out.
Who's going to start?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
And thank you, thank you. I know, I know, are you one, are you two, are you three?
We'll be here all night, Bill.
We did this for my grandmother once, when our youngest daughter was like three, and she got to like 89 or something, she was like, "Big Mom, how old are you?" Thank you so much. That was very nice, very kind of you. Thanks.
Congratulations and wish you have many more happy birthdays, trustee Riley. Thank you for your leadership on this board. I'd like to ask to see if there's any announcements. Trustee Brown?
The next regular board meeting will be held in two weeks on April 8th here at the district offices. Mr. President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Great. Seeing no other business before the board, the meeting is adjourned at 8:29. Thank you.